We'll call this meeting to order. We got a room full, we got a second room full. Okay. And we have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Howard Haggard.
Right.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
Todd McDaniel.
Here.
Chad Sargent.
Here.
Brenda Walters.
Here.
Okay, we have a forum.
Okay, recognition of guests, we've got a lot of guests today, thank you all for being here, particularly want to recognize our other elected officials. Commissioner Beck is here today, thank you for joining us.
Let's go up and check out y'all's roads.
All right, come on, man, come on.
Well, we got our, I'll just tell you, they're gonna come from thirty-seven to the fourth lane.
Yeah.
Get up here.
Yeah.
In and out, I've gotta fix them, you know, after they leave it or whatever, I'm trying to see what they look like over there going by.
Well, we are happy to share.
Miss Harry was telling me about them, I gotta stop by, I had to come up here anyway, so.
Yeah, you come up, you come see the roads, we'll take you for a tour, absolutely.
Well, I don't think you are, if I get down there, I'll hop it up here to go up down there.
Okay, well, we appreciate you coming and seeing what we got going here.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Agenda item number twenty-seven, I'm gonna take things a little out of order today, we're gonna go to agenda item number twenty-seven, which is page thirteen in your agenda packet. We have discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding the adoption of a proclamation for Ho Chi Town Youth Empowerment Day. I have something I want to say about that to start the discussion, I don't have kids, but I am so excited to see this next generation that's coming along, you know, those of us who are older, we remember when the lake wasn't here. And some people can't imagine when the lake wasn't here, and this generation, they're gonna say, I can remember when, and their next generation's gonna say, I can't believe that it used to not be this way, you know, so every generation, every two generations, they're gonna have their own ideas of what they want, and we're gonna turn it over to them. And so the sooner we can turn it over to them and let them be a part of it, so I just think that if we can pull our resolution, I mean, our proclamation, we got all different things here, it's way in the back, at the top, your top tab, if we can have our kids come forward, we got Broken Bow, uh, thank you. Home schoolers, we have Baptiste, you know, the Ho Chi Town community kinda has a split school district here, we don't have any high school kids at Baptiste right now, but we might, so anyway, we've had Ms. Broken Bow come and some of our students that are here, why don't y'all come stand back here so that people can, can see your youthful faces.
It's a little crowded, go on in.
Yeah, go in. So I'm gonna read our proclamation, and then we'll have any more discussion on the proclamation if anybody has anything. On this day, March the fifth, twenty twenty-five, the Ho Chi Town Board of Trustees do proclaim that this day is Ho Chi Town Youth Empowerment Day, whereas the youth of our community are the cornerstone of our future, embodying the energy, creativity, and potential that will shape our society. And whereas the engagement and empowerment of our young people are essential for fostering a vibrant community that thrives on innovation and resilience. And whereas the youth in our community face unique challenges that require our collective attention and support to ensure their well-being and success. And whereas it is our responsibility to provide opportunities for education, personal development, and civic engagement to provide our youth with the skills and knowledge necessary to navigate the complexities of the world. And whereas collaboration among families, schools, local organizations, and government entities is vital to creating an environment where our youth can flourish. Now therefore, I, Diane Jordan, may or do hereby proclaim March the fifth, twenty twenty-five, as Youth Empowerment Day in Ho Chi Town, and encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of our young people. Let us commit to. They're gonna make me cry, I'm just saying.
I'm tearing up just watching this thing.
Let us commit to embrace and honor the diverse backgrounds and perspectives of all young people in our community, recognizing that their unique experiences enrich our collective narrative. And witness whereof, I hereby give my hand and cause the seal of Ho Chi Town to be affixed this fifth day of March, twenty twenty-five. Does anybody have any more discussion?
I'd like to have the kids in the east and south.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Here, here you go.
Art over there.
Start left to right.
Yeah.
Hi, um, my name is Chloe Burkheim, and I'm the new Ms. Broken Bow of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
And thank you for wearing your crown of sand.
I know, I love it.
My name's Mariah Sargent, and I'm a senior at Broken Bow High School.
My name's Really Gaston, and I'm also a senior at Broken Bow High School.
My name's Jackson McDaniel, and I'm a junior at Broken Bow High School.
My name's Elliot McDaniel, and I'm a fifth.
Fifth grade.
What grade?
I'm a fifth grade.
Are you a fifth grader, Barbara? All right, so this is them. Go look at her, trustees. So if y'all would just stay with us for one more minute. Any more discussion? Okay, do we, we have a motion to accept this proclamation for our youth?
I made a motion that we accept this proclamation for.
Okay, and we have, we have a motion by.
He's not gonna get his chance.
We have a motion by Chad, we have a second by Brenda, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Probably, yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now you young folks, put this on your resume.
Do any of you wanna sit here and do this today? You can learn how this is done.
Oh, I'm gonna be sitting out there real soon, and one of you guys is gonna be right up here, bring that little girl back here.
Elliot.
She's your brother.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for talking to us today.
Thank you.
All right.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we should go ahead and get that last. You're just awesome, sweet. Okay, we are going to go on to agenda item number five, and we will.
Number four.
We will do number four later, we're gonna go out of order today.
Okay.
And we're gonna move on with agenda item number five, which is our consent docket. The following items are considered routine by the Board of Trustees and will be conducted in one motion. Is this my pen?
Yes.
Discussion desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent docket and considered separately. Approval of the February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes, approval of February fifth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes, and approval of the payment, payment of claims, any discussion. Flip them back in front of you.
I've looked at all of it, I'm of a motion we approve the consent docket.
Okay, we have a motion by Howard to approve the consent docket.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
I'm going to abstain, I was absent for one of the meetings, so I'll just abstain.
Uh, Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
Okay, item number six, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding items removed from the consent docket. Item number seven, treasurer's report.
Thank you. The, uh, first document we have is gonna be our profit loss statement. This can be just the general profit loss statement. You can see our lodging tax was up thirty-eight point thirty-seven percent. Our cigarette, uh, tax, sales tax, and use tax, um, was up sixteen point four-nine percent. And then our total expense was up quite a bit, uh, this month compared to last year, and that's mainly because we had the purchase of the two vehicles for the police department. That second handout on the legal form is a profit loss breakdown with the different departments.
Well, this is good.
Yeah.
Good add.
Right, so you'll, you'll see that, um, and then finally, on the balance sheet, uh, you'll basically see our, uh, total liabilities and equity, uh, our bank account less outstanding checks, and, uh, less outstanding bills as of last month. Well, that's it for me.
These are great, it's, uh, we're still so new, it's hard to see the trends from month over month and year to year, so it's, it's still nice to see that lodging tax is up thirty-eight percent for February, which is typically one of our lowest months.
And I'm assuming that's reading that number down a little bit.
But, you know, we still, we're, we're still above where we were, we're at one sixty-seven instead of one twenty-one in collections, so that's, that's still a nice trend to have. Okay. Thank you, Charles. Okay, town administrators report. Oh, well, sorry, sorry, we have a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Okay, motion by Brenda, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chad, roll call vote, please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Now it's your turn, Adam.
Okay.
Okay, town administrators report, agenda item number eight.
Leaving you out today, Charles, sorry about that.
I thought I had one.
I think that's all that I have, I have this further.
Yeah, I have extra.
I'll get you my report afterwards, if that's all right for you. All right, so, uh, let's start off with roads, uh, it's a hot topic of discussion here in Ho Chi Town, um, so the Make-A-Road project, we've got the pre-bid meeting, uh, date set up for March twentieth at three P M. This is mandatory for contractors that are interested in bidding on our road project, uh, bid deadline is due, uh, three twenty-six, so March twenty-sixth at four thirty P M. We have a special board meeting that we're taking a look at probably March twenty-seventh, if that works for you guys, I'll send another follow-up email on that later. We've got a key here, construction, they finalized, uh, road work on Orca on the twenty-first of February, uh, we began at around four sixty-three Chinook Bend, it's, uh, right where Chinook kind of turns into Orca, and then crews cleaned up ditch lines and laid new material and corrected a lot of washout spots all the way up through to Gutter Chaos to, to connect to two fifty-nine and Lake Bums area as well. There was a significant washout area that we'd used at N K P Construction, uh, to come in, and we, we originally had an eighteen inch and then a twenty-four inch tin horn at that location, and we actually upgraded it to four twenty-four inch tin horns. I drove the site again yesterday, and I felt like the site wasn't compacting correctly, and again, that's because of all the precipitation that we've had lately. If it ruts up, we'll go in and we'll excavate that soft material that's not drying and forming properly, and then we'll lay new dry material in, and we'll top it off with some rock base, but anyways, we're keeping an eye on it.
Still a big improvement.
Yeah, it's decent, yeah, it'll handle a larger volume.
That's a big interception for us.
Yeah, it'll handle a larger volume now, and then, and then we went in and we also corrected, there was a cross-section water line that was placed for a cabin a while back, and there was a pretty significant rut that went across the road in a cross-section manner.
Talk about more of those later.
We topped off some, some materials on that, so, uh, anyways, we dressed up the whole road and, and fixed up some of the drainage situation, we're just kinda keeping an eye on it from there. Moving forward, we have several tin horn projects all throughout, uh, Ho Chi Town that we're working on, waiting on a large number of locates to come back, so that way we can identify where the utility lines are located before our crews can begin their work. We have, uh, and, and great news, uh, is we have our private road easement batch number one completed, uh, this is part of our lodge scale, large-scale initiative to obtain road easements across private roadways in our community. To acquire these easements, we had to contact and obtain signed easement agreements from each developer, from each subdivision of batch one, and the batch one subdivisions include the following, uh, Sunrise Ridge, Canai Toby Trails South, Canai Toby Trails Southwest, Canai Toby Trails Pine Hills North, Sunrise Ridge East, and Timber Creek Trails South Phase Seven. And, uh, just so that you know, we've actually already been working on our second batch, even though batch one, uh, is not finalized, we've actually been pushing batch two and trying to get, uh, in contact with those developers early, and we're sitting at about eighty-five percent completion on our batch two, so I'm really excited about getting that. We have, uh, two developers that have been a little bit tough getting a hold of, but we're tracking them down.
Send them the list.
Yeah, I'll send you a list of who I can't get a hold of, uh, but we're tracking them down, we'll work with the attorneys to send them some notice and let them know, hey, we wanna fix your roads, uh, let's, let's get the easement signed.
What was the timeline on the batch one?
Um, it's right, you have a resolution in this, uh, in this agenda today, actually, to sign up on it, so once you guys approve that resolution today, uh, Diane will have to go in and then she'll stop countersign all of the documents, and then Julie will notarize them, and once we have them signed and notarized from the Townsend, then we have to file with the county, and once we.
What was the, what was the back, what was the timeline on acquiring the, the, uh, the agreements?
From batch one, like, I'm just curious.
Especially on the legal work of the, the, of them.
Uh, to get them all drafted, identify who all the, the developers were, probably five, five months and some change, I'd say, we've been working on that one.
And so on.
And, uh, anyways, uh, we've got some great momentum, and we're moving forward, we're, we're at eighty-five percent completion for batch two, so batch two should be coming up here pretty quickly as well. And then once all that's signed, we've got everything submitted to the county, uh, then we'll be able to start scheduling road maintenance on these subdivisions.
So fantastic.
As far as, uh, police goes, our clerk has been incredible, thank you, Julie, uh, she had engaged O M A G with insurance registrations for the board to review, uh, Julie went the extra mile and ensured that all equipment that is outfitted with our patrol units is covered as an additional under our insurance policy. This is critical because upfitting, uh, procedures includes over twenty-five thousand in equipment on each item, so, uh, this is, this was essential, that was a great catch on Julie's behalf, so thank you for that. Uh, our, our police chief will be discussing with you guys later today, uh, with regards to our, our badge draft, uh, there for your review today, um, our patrol unit paperwork and payment has been completed, we're waiting on our insurance receipt, uh, for the transfer, and then we'll get them over to, uh, the NSIC Equipment's hands, um, I'll let the police chief talk more on that later. Uh, Ms. Lanis items, uh, met with trustee Walters, we developed a uniform retirement benefits package for our baseline town employees, uh, this will report a board action, require a board action for final approval and review. We've received bids, uh, from multiple payment processors, and we've narrowed down the recommendation for the board to review later in this agenda, um, we have specific recommendations, we'll get into that later on. Also, some really great news moving forward is we finally received a draft of the town's website that I felt like was truly reflective of the community, um, and we've acquired a bunch of kind of public input on this, what are your thoughts, how do you feel about this, does it accurately reflect Ho Chi Town? And that's gonna be exciting moving forward, there's still a couple of changes to, to be made, but, uh, I was glad to finally send that out to you guys. We've installed deadbolt, deadbolt locks, and installed multiple security measures across town hall, uh, Chris has completed our S T R license database, which merged all of our previous avenue records, which they withheld for a considerable amount of time, uh, with our Granicus records, and we transferred over five hundred licenses to our new system. So that's a, a pretty big task that's, we've been working on for a couple of months, um, we have gas card agreements presented, uh, presented here for your review later today, and then, uh, our Matthew Love, who is our attorney, who's been working on our code of ordinance review, uh, he should have a draft, uh, recommendation for us ready, uh, as soon as Monday. So that's pretty exciting news moving forward with our code of ordinance review, that's all I've got, does anyone have any questions for me?
A lot of great work.
We may have to have a special meeting.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we'll likely have to have a special meeting sometime in the last.
No, good work, good, good work, and the first ones are always the hardest, you know, getting the roads, it's like, how do we, how do we do this? Well, hopefully, batch two and everything afterwards will come easier, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, building the road is the hardest.
Absolutely.
So, okay, great job, Adam.
Good job.
Thank you, Adam, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, um, let's see, that's just a report, we need an agenda item for, we should have discussion on that. Okay, uh, police chief, you wanna, this is your second time up, right?
Third time.
Third time, okay, all right, it gets a little easier.
Special meeting.
More, more stuff, okay, what you got for us?
Just update the board, um, the police department has been working diligently with the town attorneys to complete the policies and procedures, which are in the agenda for today for approval.
Let me, let me ask you a question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Were there any changes that you made specifically to those, or were they all from Lexi Poll?
Those are standard best practices.
Okay.
There will be some changes coming later, once the P D goes live for actual procedural day-to-day stuff, that will be in memorandum form and will also be added to the policy and procedure.
Okay, we may wanna talk about that some more when we get to that agenda item.
Okay. Been working with attorney Liz George on the, uh, N O U with the sheriff's office for their dispatch and, uh, geosafe system, and we have that finalized, it's also on the agenda today. And like Adam mentioned, hopefully, we will have, uh, draft, uh, city ordinances in the coming days, so then we can proceed with, uh, some of the P D stuff as far as, uh, city ordinances, issuing citations, et cetera. Once we get that and, uh, present that to you guys at a later date. P D's currently working on officer salary studies for, uh, officer pay and benefit package, so you could hopefully start, uh, posting job postings to fill some of our positions.
Is that beginning within the next month, or to post those positions, or you could, uh?
Probably, hopefully, if we can nail down the silos and the benefits, we can go ahead and make those postings, and then we'll have to do backgrounds, and hopefully by the time that's completed, we'll be getting our fleet back from the outfitter, and then hopefully putting bodies in, and having officers on the street. Okay, guys? That's all I have.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Can't wait to see those badges on everybody. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, agenda item number ten, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding amendments for possible adoption of the town of Ho Chi Town employee handbook. Adam, you wanna quickly discuss that?
Yeah, so real quick, uh, item number ten for the handbook, uh, we've made some pretty significant progress on the handbook, uh, we've done, uh, made some modifications to, uh, P T O went from vacation to vacation and sick to a P T O conversion, uh, and the procedures with it for the time of media relations policy, handling of confidential tax information, part-time classifications, uh, appeals and disciplinary actions, mileage and per diem allowances, procedures, dangerous weather conditions, and closures. And, uh, the trustees will obviously later in this meeting, uh, make a decision on a potential retirement plan for baseline employees, like we just talked about in my report, um, and that'll be a critical element of the handbook after this, uh, it'll be ready for the attorney to review and then provide assessment of the draft to proceed.
So this is, says it was updated on January third.
I, uh, that's not the most current revision, I sent out a digital revision on, uh, to the trustees yesterday, uh, so that should've been three, four, twenty-five to reflect my most recent changes.
And are the changes highlighted?
Yes, they, I highlighted them all in yellow, all the changes that I made since the last revision.
Okay.
In yellow, and then items that I wasn't sure on, that I felt like I wanted you guys to take a look at even further, I highlighted in either red or in orange.
Okay.
Again, that is in digital format in your inboxes.
Okay. Can I have a printed copy?
Absolutely, we'll get you one for you.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to have some more time to.
Yeah, it's definitely still a work in progress.
They said they have it on the agenda, so that when we're ready, we will be ready, but.
Here.
Is everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Anything?
I'd like a printed copy.
Howard and Brenda.
That's okay.
I'd like it in next month.
Just so that we're gonna be close.
We should be close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure it never, never gets.
I'll send you a copy of it.
It's very important to get these benefits out here for approval.
Right. Brenda, are you good, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna take no action?
Yeah, make a motion to take no action on it.
Okay. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a roll call vote to take no action?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement of the Ho Chi Town Police Department's Policy and Procedure Manual, let's, let's talk about that again, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna cover that all in here. Let me, let me see if I understand, well, there's not a tab, because it's a five-hundred-page document, which I've got a copy of, make sure that I understand what we're saying, this big document is basically Lexi Poll's standard policies and procedures, so you're asking us to go ahead and adopt that, and then when we make town-specific changes, you'll bring those back to the board?
For approval.
Okay.
At that time.
Okay, have, have you and Adam discussed this with Liz, does she recommend that we approve it?
I, I haven't had any conversations with regards to that, uh, the chief working with the attorneys at Lexi Poll. She was fine with it since it was completed with Lexi Poll, and it includes the eleven, uh, statutory mandated requirements.
Okay, and I got that email, okay.
So whenever, whenever we're working with Lexi Poll, you have, uh, like, our attorney, Liz.
Right.
And then you have, uh, the Lexi Poll attorneys that are part of that system that we're paying for, or actually, we're getting from O M A G. And then we have Kevin Katz from O M A G and their attorneys, so we have three different legal entities that we're working for in the curation of, of that, of those policies.
And I did, I did see the email from Liz, that she was good. Anybody else have questions on that? All good? All good? Okay.
Sorry, we've got three legal, three legal teams looking at it.
Yeah, but I'd like for Liz to tell me it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she did, yeah, she did, yeah, I got the email, yeah, and I appreciate being copied on those, so I can see that.
She did, she sent it yesterday to Diane, that she, she liked it, it's okay.
Yeah.
And also, I attended, as the city prosecutor, I attended review that as well, but I have not had an opportunity, because, because it's five-hundred-and-sixty-three pages long.
And it, and it is a document that can be changed as well.
Through memo.
Right, right.
If any issues, policies can be changed.
Well, and just like with, I mean, sometimes it's to our advantage, again, sometimes it's better to wait, and sometimes we need to approve the, the base level, so that we can move forward, and then we can make the changes as we need.
That'll allow, that'll allow them to keep moving forward.
Right, so that we can keep moving forward, okay. Any more discussion on this? Do we have a motion to approve the Ho Chi Town Police Department Policy and Procedure Manual?
I'll make that motion to approve it.
We have a motion by Howard, may we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Brenda. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Okay, it's all yours, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, agenda item number twelve, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement on the approval of the twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting dates. Let me get that. Adam, do you wanna speak to this for just a minute, you know, we've, we've started with some P and Z, we kind of stopped there, we had to replace some members.
Right.
Do you wanna add anything to this?
Yeah, so we just, we need to schedule a crew by the Board, Board of Trustees, so we can, uh, begin hosting regularly scheduled meetings for the Planning Commission, uh, these dates are what appears to be best for, what works best for the Planning Commission members that are currently serving, and then again, at some point, we'll need to address, uh, the seat vacancy as well, so.
And can names be changed, I guess, like?
Yeah, as long as proper noses is provided.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
You want changes now?
No, no, I just think, if you get down the road.
Oh, that's.
Closer than.
Yeah, yeah, I see that Thursday before Memorial Day might be a little jammed up for some folks, but. So are these, what, the third or fourth Thursday of the month at four P M?
Typically, yeah.
Would you look at, okay, I mean, I'm good with that, anybody else?
So it gives you enough time to get an update to the board based upon whatever happens from, from that previous meeting.
And you're gonna make those available online?
Absolutely, yeah, they'll be posted everywhere, this is, uh, the regular Board of Trustees meetings.
Okay, great.
Yeah, sounds good.
Any more discussion on P and Z?
Cool.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the Planning Commission twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five meeting dates?
I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting date.
Okay, we have a motion by Chad, may we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Which group, hey, Chris, will you add those to my calendar?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item thirteen, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of statement of nuisance pursuant to Ho Chi Town Municipal Code Section five dash three dash seven B regarding sixty Chinook Road, including but not limited to setting a hearing and provide notice of the same in accordance with Ho Chi Town Municipal Code Section five dash three dash seven C. Okay, let's, um, statement of nuisance, you have a summary in your book, um, but it's, uh, the top of section five dash three dash seven, the summary of abatement of nuisances, and then you've got pictures, you have statements from witnesses.
Mayor, if I may ask that.
Yep, and, okay, and I think that's, that's it, so I've got something to say, Adam, you've got something for us?
Yes, all right, so a little bit about this is that, uh, town, town hall was petitioned by a neighboring property owner requesting the board to review the situation with, with concerns of a public nuisance, uh, there were some claims of alleged, uh, unattended burns at the property, potentially burning tires, trash accumulation, and some noise, um, and then, uh, I believe Mayor Jordan has reached out to the tenant of the property, and has reported that the property, that the tenant at the property is interested in working a solution, I'll let you kind of take it from there, moving forward.
Yeah, I think we have this resolved, now that we know who the parties are that are involved, so I think we can take care. Yeah, I think we have this resolved now that we know who the parties are that are involved, so I think we can take care of this without having to, um, go to a public hearing on this. Is that the right word on this, public hearing, setting a hearing, yeah, okay. But I'd like to go ahead, what I'd like to do is table this for now, let's see if we can't resolve this real quickly and then if we can't, then we'll bring it back for a hearing. But I think we can fix this, fix this squabble.
Table it or take no action?
Oh, and take no action.
I agree.
Yep, okay, so do we have a motion to take no action on the nuisance ordinance?
I'll make a motion to take no action on item number thirteen.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Howard, may we have a roll call vote please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, we'll take no action at this time. Item number fourteen, discussion consideration and possible action approval rejection amendment or postponement regarding a construction management request from Benchmark Construction Services LLC for task order number one, Mako Road. The task order includes field inspection and oversight of approximately one thousand nine hundred and fifty feet of road overlay on Mako Road from US two fifty-nine A North to Marlin Drive. The scope of the work includes ditch cleaning, driveway shaping, cross drain replacements, uh, base failure repairs and material testing. The total cost is not to exceed nineteen thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars and five cents. Does anybody wanna talk about Mako, which is, it's, it's in your tab under task order?
This is the company we contracted with last year, correct?
Yes.
And this is their first task order within that company.
Any more discussion on that? Howard?
Yeah, gotta ask. Where did the nineteen fifty come from, the original work order was fifteen sixty-one? Where, what is the difference to, to re, is, is that a concern?
It's an adjustment based upon the changes that were made to the bid, the bid spec sheet for the project. So the engineer went back, made some changes per our last meeting and then he's reintroduced that bid sheet and so they had to change their numbers as well to ensure.
The bid sheet is now nineteen hundred and fifty feet, not, not the original.
That's correct, they've changed, they've made changes to the project, so these.
As long as they both match.
These, this is to reflect the changes and inspections that will be required of the project.
That was my only question. If this number, if this is what he's gonna inspect, the bid sheet, that's the magic, so, okay.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to accept the construction management request from Benchmark not to exceed nineteen thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars and five cents?
I'll make a motion, we've set item number fourteen.
We have a motion by Todd, may we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Brenda, may we have a roll call vote please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Hey, that motion carries.
Yeah.
Of course, I knew you were, okay. Agenda item number fifteen, discussion consideration and possible action approval rejection amendment and or postponement of the purchase of equipment from Axon, including body cameras, fleet cameras and tasers. You've got your Axon quotes here. I'm not a police officer. Anybody wanna? You want? I like to do ride alongs. I like to do ride alongs, are you gonna offer ride alongs in your jurisdiction?
No.
Ride alongs are a lot of fun, I used to do them in Tulsa all the time.
You have to ride in the backseat behind the bear, you know?
Well, if you're really good, you go with detectives and they don't have those cars. Okay, um, you wanna walk us through a little bit of this?
Alright, so tasers are what we call intermediate style weapon, less lethal and it just gives the officers another level of use of force. A lot of times it's a pretty good de-escalation tool, it never has to be utilized. So the police department's requesting those tasers for, for the officers. Where are they?
This would say, can we kind of maybe go in order here of what we're looking at?
Is it spot cams or?
Well, I'm starting on page one.
Yeah, I was just looking for the, yeah, I was looking for the.
Yeah, so right now we've got the BWCUW TAP, a la carte hardware, a la carte software, a la carte services, which is on page three.
So that's body cams?
Those are the body cams, okay.
Camera bundles.
Yes, sir.
And some doggies, um, yeah, it's all of that.
So the B, the BWCU is the body cam?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the C is requesting the body cameras to increase transparency and officer safety, reduces some liability for the town and the police department by having all the evidence recorded as for.
So I know we're looking at getting seven of those. Does it, kind of like when they share police cars, we may have seven officers, but we only have, you know, two police cars. So when you're on shift, you get the car and the equipment, does it make sense to have the number of body cameras for the vehicles that we have?
To start, yeah.
Help me through that.
We can do that, we get a better discount on the bundles of and in the long run, we're gonna have more than two officers. And some of them won't be able to share that equipment.
Right.
Plus, plus the fact that, it may not be like a pistol, these things gonna break every now and then, cameras gonna break every now and then. Now you've got to back up to put in service while they come and fix it, these are up.
There is a spare included in the, in the quantities in case one does break, but they also offer the TAP refresh, which at the two and a half year mark, they replace all the equipment.
They replace it.
And then at the five year mark, they replace it again.
So this, but this entire thing is built on a five year, is, is it a lease, is it a purchase or what is?
It's a purchase, they will bill us annually, so we don't tie it.
Okay. Which is your eleven thousand two hundred and fourteen per year, okay. And do we have a breakdown, like what it would be if this was a three year plan or something else? I hate to find out that we kicked two officers for three years and we paid for equipment for seven.
Now I'm looking on page one.
Look on page five.
Put it down over the five year. Break it down. What it would be for my, for a year, for five years.
Okay, well, that doesn't sound so bad now when you break it down.
If we break it down.
So fifteen hundred. I mean.
But you own the equipment and.
Yes.
What's the warranty on, on each?
Five year, five year warranty.
Just a five year, okay.
And at the two and a half year mark, they replace.
They replace everything anyway.
The body cameras, at the five year mark, they replace all that again and that's all included in this package. It's called a TAP refresh.
So we're paying eleven thousand six nineteen twenty-seven a year.
Which is a thousand bucks a month for safety, I'm good.
I have a question regarding specifically the tasers, if there's a warranty on them, is there, uh, do they require the town to accept liability for malfunction or do they include that during the warranty period?
That's a good question, I don't have the answer for that, but I'll give one.
Okay.
Who knows, we got here.
What, uh? So what, what are your, what is your, um, discount rate for, you know, let's just say we have three officers, Chris, in, over the course of the next year. Or seven, so, I mean, I'm, I know it's smart to have an extra two, like I have wacky doggies at the restaurant, we always keep a few extra in case one of them goes down, but what's your, what's your thought on seven, are you anticipating us to potentially have four or five offers, officers over the course of maybe the next year or two and then?
I would have that for the year, honestly.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna try the twenty-four hours a day that we're gonna need.
The part of it is, you know, high, you know, we need all seven of them on Saturday nights, but we probably only need one on Tuesday at ten AM. So I need the seven at once.
The increased quantity and this is just necessity, what I think is necessity for the department. Um, it creates a better bundle package, it better discounts for us.
I'm good.
Sure.
What's the backup, whether you want an office backup?
I, I was, I was curious about that at this point, I was looking at how much of a discount they give you for, you know, maybe if you buy X amount, if you buy five to seven, do they give you?
I would have liked to have seen it broken down.
Is it a fifty dollar discount or is it a five hundred, you know, three, four hundred, five hundred discount?
And also.
If I'm reading this right, I'll take one, to talk about your, your total savings for the five years of seventeen thousand twenty dollars for this seven, for this seven bundle package.
But I'd like to have seen that broken down and say, three of them and what would be a, a two and a half year or a three year contract instead of five years.
Cameras and.
That's good, is it?
But I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Also on the body cameras, Lexi Poll has a grant program and I talked to Kevin Katz and he has assured us that Ho Chi Minh will receive the grant for reimbursement, we have to purchase the equipment and then reimburse us up to ten thousand dollars.
Oh, now you dealt with it.
Good for you.
Well, thanks for finding those, I mean, these are little Easter eggs when we find out what rates we are available, have available to us, so. That's good, that's good, okay.
And cameras, cameras are important, that's, you know.
Absolutely, for your protection.
I was, that'd be a, probably at the beginning.
Brenda?
Did we decide to put cameras on the vehicles also?
That is also.
Yeah, that's not bad, that's not bad.
Coming up, I figured I might.
Okay.
You needed to, you needed it.
All, those are an incredible help in prosecution.
Yes.
Now so many people are spending on their virtual cars, yeah, they make YouTube's on those, I've seen them. Okay, so we're good with that, um. I would, um, we can continue, but I wanna make it, you know, page one, these bill two addresses, they have got to be the PO box. I say this every month. PO box.
Like, I can share emails with you where I gave them the PO box.
Yeah.
And the physical, the PO box remaining.
Yes. Don't bring it to us.
Still put it on there.
Don't do it.
I'll put it on there.
So fix it, fix it before you, before I see it again.
Get them to put it in there.
But the last, the last question I've got, Chris, is, um, you know, I'm, I'm curious on, you know, when we have a work order, when we have, you know, as, as a town and that, maybe Adam can answer this. Are there multiple companies that you can bid this equipment on or is this a one-shot deal that has the best, you know, um?
There's other offerings on the table and my, my, my.
You mean if you're making the best stuff?
My previous law enforcement agents that I've worked with, um, they were not happy with other products. So there's like Bulldog, or I'm sorry, it's Guard Dog. It's, I'll, I'll let you.
A sole source vendor, so the taser, the body camera and the Incor, they all communicate with each other. And just about every agency in McCurton County uses Axon products. So if we're all on the scene or they come to Ho Chi Minh to help us, if they activate a taser, it activates every body camera on that scene. Incor video. And Kevin and I have the ability to log in and see live through their body cam and their fleet video what they're actually seeing on scene from here if we were here.
That's so important.
Yeah.
It has a GPS mapping, we can see where every agent or every officer that's on that scene, what their exact location is.
So. Yeah.
It's a, it's, they're a sole source vendor, there are other companies that offer them, but they don't communicate with the body cams, the taser, Incor or the other agencies.
Yeah, for sure.
I'll share this with the board, earlier, last week, can you remember what day I was going to the back, anyway, I was visiting Jason, the police chief, in Baguio. That was his first question, are you going back lawn? That was the very first question he asked, yes.
I was at Sheriff's Office yesterday, so.
That's what he shared with me, that everybody in McCurton County, that they can just communicate with all the law enforcement in McCurton County, so.
Yeah, I think you've done good homework on this.
Good homework, appreciate you.
Yeah. More discussion?
I think Chris is, is in this position for a reason and. This is his forte and his expertise, so.
You have to do it.
I think he's done his homework and we trust him.
I'll remind the board that I'm trying to get the tools that we need for the department, but also getting on with tax dollars and save when we can, spend where we have to. That's, that's gonna be my motto throughout this process.
Appreciate you.
Great.
Yep, good, okay. Brenda, are you good, Todd?
So this discussion and this fifty-eight thousand, fifty-six thousand, is this just the body cameras or is this?
That's, that's over the five year period.
No, that is body cameras and taser.
Yes.
Yeah, and the fleet cameras.
Fleet cameras.
And the fleet cameras too?
Which you said they're all integrated.
So that's, I was just looking.
Yeah, when you break it, the five year quote down into annual, I mean, that's really on all this fare, so.
About a thousand dollars a month, what it matters.
For all, all those products.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, this is.
You good Brenda, Todd, you good, you wanna look somewhere?
No, I'm good.
Okay, don't use it on me.
We have to have it, yes, we have to have it.
Yeah, alright, um, without further discussion, do we have a motion to approve the purchase of equipment from Axon, including body cameras, fleet cameras and tasers?
I'll make a motion that we purchase the equipment from Axon, including body cameras, fleet cameras and tasers.
Okay, we have a motion by Chad, may we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Howard, may we have a roll call vote please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Hey, that motion carries.
Great work chief, thank you chief.
Okay, um, item number sixteen, discussion consideration and possible action approval rejection amendment and or postponement regarding amendment number one to the agreement between the town of Ho Chi Minh and TSW for the town of Ho Chi Minh zoning ordinance, which includes additional services such as project management meetings, signage regulations and parking lot standards, these services will be performed for narrowly fee not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Okay. What brought this on?
So we expected this item to actually come in under budget by a couple thousand, but ten thousand dollars is a contingency that was written in with the debt from having to come back to the board for another amendment to continue the services. Again, this is just like it states here as attaining the meetings that we're about to start having, signage regulations, parking lot standards, drafting all the way from bottom to the top. We're already doing this with our zoning regulations, we're doing this with our credit board mixes, we're doing this with our subdivision regulations and we're doing this with our road design standards as well. So this is just another piece of the pie that we've got to have written.
I like the thing that you're trying to get TSW to help you handle the meetings and get it done.
Yes.
That's a good idea.
To have professional planners, the ICP, certified planners, uh, attending these, these meetings regularly. And since they're doing the, the comp plan, they'll be in attendance as well, so this is, this is all kind of pairing together.
Yeah, this coalescing's been working out well, I think, somewhat in with roads and Benchmark, TSW with the comp plan.
And this will lead into public, to public, um.
Public hearings, yeah.
Yeah, this is, it's so, so vital.
Yeah.
Once, once this plan is brought to our attention, once it's laid on the table for us to approve or disapprove. There are public hearings for everybody through the town and everybody to come look at these amounts.
This includes three public hearings.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion on TSW?
Cash goods.
Do we have a motion to approve the, um, agreement between TSW and the town of Ho Chi Minh for zoning ordinance, which includes additional services such as the project management meetings, the signage regulations and parking lot standards?
I'll make a motion to accept item number sixteen.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd, may we have a second?
I'll second.
Do you want to include the not to exceed amount?
Yes, not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
Motion by Todd, second. Second by Chad.
We both.
Roll call vote?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Hey, that motion carries.
Item number seventeen, discussion consideration and possible action approval rejection amendment and or postponement to approve purchase of the advertising manner for the town of Ho Chi Minh for Broken Bow baseball at four by six feet for five hundred dollars, four by eight feet for a thousand dollars or four by ten feet for fifteen hundred dollars. Item number seventeen.
I'll kind of just speak to this real quick, uh, I was approached by the athletic director from Broken Bow. They have this huge baseball tournament every summer, or been having it for a few summers now. These people, mostly these folks stay in Ho Chi Minh when they're attending this tournament. Other than the advertising that we would get, it also helps, the kids that live here go to school in Broken Bow and I've seen it as a way that we could give back to the school, uh, kind of help them out and then basically advertise to a few thousand people that come in and will attend this. I wanted to get a chance to talk to you guys before the meeting about it, but it was kind of a last minute deal, uh, when he called me. So that's, that's basically where it's at, so it's up to you guys if we wanna do this.
So that event is sponsored by the school?
It's, it's strictly the school, it's, it's not the city of Broken Bow, it's, it's a school function.
It's, it's strictly the school, it's, it's not the city of Brokenbow, it's, it's a school function. Uh, he told me that, yeah, I think there's forty-something high school teams from around the state come in and play that weekend, and, um.
Is, is this the one I'm hearing from Brokenbow, the five to eight thousand Little League?
No, no, it's, it's a separate, yeah, it's a separate, separate deal.
This is an independent league?
This, no, this is, this is Brokenbow High School, it's a school tournament.
And when did this start?
Uh, March seventeen, probably, yeah. And, and so they've, they've approached Brokenbow, every, all the communities around for, with this option, basically. And I, I know Brokenbow has taken them up on the option. So, it would basically just be for advertising at the baseball fields for the city of Ochetown.
Oh, okay, now I understand. So, these are banners to put on the fence?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Seeing as you're not a game or something.
Okay, okay.
Um, he said there would typically be a few hundred, uh, people at each game per day. So, I mean, a lot of those would be repeat people, but you'd still get some, some new advertising.
So, what would our design be? Would it be?
We, we.
Ochetown, Ochetown supports, or what it, what?
Well, I sent them the town logo, just to see if it was an option, and they said, oh, that wouldn't be any problem, but if we wanted to change it, we could, we just would need to move quickly.
I'm good with the logo.
Visit Ochetown, and then before you're there, ochetown dot com.
Are we, are we just talking about one banner or three banners?
Here's, here was my thought, I mean, when I looked at it, I mean, Todd can tell me, if we did three of the five hundred dollar banners, it'd still be fifteen hundred dollars, but maybe those banners would be in different places where different people see them based off of where they're sitting at.
And I like that idea. I like, you would cover the whole, all areas where people were sitting, and you're still under the maximum, yes, sir.
Uh, do we get to keep the banner afterwards? Like, do we get possession of it?
Do they stay?
I haven't asked that, but I'm sure we could.
Do they reuse it, or maybe we can get it back and we can use it in other applications as well?
I can find out.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Or, or if it could stay in the stadium for a long period?
Or stay there, that might be even better, then it's there all through, and they use that field for Little League, I mean, they use it for everything, so.
Yeah, either way.
I bet they stay there.
I'd like some other language, like you said, like welcome, you know, visit Ochetown, or, and something like that.
Just remember, the more stu-, I mean, read your billboards, the more words you put on there, the harder they are to read.
Yeah, but this is a banner and a field, not a billboard, so.
Yeah, fields are, fields are big.
Because it gives me a direction to design that I can.
But you, you're on a timeline, right?
Well, I mean.
We're on a quick timeline.
Barely quick, but, so I, I would think the logo would visit, visit Ochetown or something, to keep it simple.
Yeah, simple.
From the time you place the order, you're looking at seven days, give it five to seven days, quickly.
What do you think, Todd? Do you think two?
I like Diane's idea, three, that way you got center field, left field, and right field.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and fifteen hundred bucks.
You don't think that'll, uh, we wanna encroach on anyone else that's trying to?
I don't think they would care.
I think they're really good.
Yeah, I think they'd be fine with it.
And if we can, if it stays up there, great, and also if we can get it back, we can reuse that in other applications, that'd be really great, so.
Maybe that can look awkward for three of them.
No.
Can't do enough for this.
Sure, I mean, normally you just see one.
Won't get the whole fence covered.
I'm wondering if they're in the stadium right now.
Okay.
They'll just, it's three times more likely to visit, right?
That's what I'm thinking.
Two to three, yes.
I think we can justify it as long as we can keep ownership of the banners.
I, I, I can get that answered.
Normally they stay up for a season.
And remember, banners are probably considered consumables?
Sure, sure they are.
I mean, we'll take them back if we can, but they may be considered a consumable. The way it was in the bar.
I can see two, if you get them. If you want the banners, I can make sure you get them.
Okay, get it done quick?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, do we just do three banners, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars? That would be, that would be my motion, that's, that's, I make a motion to approve purchase of three, four by six banners, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Howard to have the banner, who wants to design the banners? Brenda? You gonna let Adam take care of it? Okay, Adam and Todd?
Yeah.
Alright, okay, we have the.
Ellen, Skip, Shelley.
Alright, we have a motion to approve purchasing three banners for the Brokenbow baseball team, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars, by Howard, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Hacker.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
See, that motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item eighteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding adding Police Chief Christopher Williamson to the Town of Ochetown credit card. Discussion. Adam, you wanna start with the discussion for us on that?
Yeah, absolutely, uh, so this kinda came up in discussion during one of our staff meetings, um, I feel like a dedicated, uh, town credit card for the chief can just kind of simplify the management of the police department expenditures, making it a little bit easier to track and report and reconcile our purchases for that department. Uh, and also separate from my charges as well, so that way Julie knows what account to draw that from. Um, also in critical situations with the chief having a town card, it ensures that the police chief can make a quick purchase without having to wait for approval from me, or from the board, uh, or dealing with any sort of delays that might be crucial for public safety moving forward in the future. And then, uh, again, a town issued credit card allows for clear and transparent tracking of all of our expenditures, so that's kind of the main reason why I requested this item to go before you guys today.
Howard, you good with this?
I'm definitely good with it, yes, I mean, I've, I've looked in, I've looked in the past, and not only just for credit board purchases, but just like Chief and I talked, go, go look, look at the, uh, Sheriff's Department. Any, anytime they have to transfer prisoners or anything that has to go outside the municipality, they have to go to the captain. Uh, that's a lot of expense on the road, motels, food, the whole nine yards. That's difficult for the, for the deputies to do that, and they finally got the commissioners to approve up to a certain number of dollars in through four issued credit cards that were put through the, uh, Sheriff's Department. So, this is another way of doing that, you know, uh, Chief's gonna be entertaining guests and talking to other police chiefs across the state and municipalities, he needs that opportunity to be able to offer them different somewhere, so. I make a motion to approve the Chief's credit card. I'm sorry.
Any more discussion? We're good? Charles, just throw, throw any, in the, you good with our finances on how we separate out credit cards and all that?
I think so, yeah, we'll be able to do it, we'll get two separate statements, I think.
That's what I said, I think that's good.
Yeah. The way, the way it is right now, we get two different statements every month. One of them is a zero, and the other one is got out, so we just put his name on the other one.
Yeah.
So, we'll get two statements, probably get three statements, be my guess, that we'll always probably have that other zero. Yeah, but.
Yeah, the, the other one, it's a management.
Management there.
Right, is what it is. Where we can, we can see all the credit cards and how they're being.
Uh, the only question, go ahead, sir.
I was just gonna add that you might check the benefits in the contract, because some credit card company's offer benefits, like roadside assistance included with the credit card, you would need to, might need to register a vehicle with that, but that might be something that would be included as a free benefit.
And we are limited as to which credit card companies we can use, we can't just go out there and get Visa, American Express, we're very limited on our credit card, we may wanna take a look at that with O M A at another time.
Thank you, Chris. Did we, Charles, I forget, did we have to give minutes approved to the bank to open up the credit card? It's been so long, I can't remember now. I'll check, I'll check in the bank.
We did with the name, yeah.
I'll, I'll check with the.
Is it a check card, strictly from the, that?
From the bank.
From the bank account?
Mm-hmm.
Or is it a credit card?
No, that, well, if it's not a debit card, it is an actual credit card, but it is issued through the bank, it is issued within the bank.
I think, I think we want to get the minutes.
I'll, I'll check with free to, I think it has to have approved minutes for us to do that.
Which means you're not gonna be able to see it until April, unless we have a special meeting.
Or at least we'd have a special meeting.
Which.
And it'll probably.
Looks like we're piling on for a special meeting.
Anyway, we'll check, we'll find out, yes.
Yeah, they'll sign a, sign the credit card contract as well with the town.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, okay.
Brenda, you good?
Okay, we're done.
Your finance?
Well, I was just saying with the minutes of this meeting, that's a price for that.
Well, they don't get approved.
They don't get approved and signed till next month.
Oh, I gotcha.
That's where you monthly lay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Then we have, I was just saying, if we have a special meeting, we might could get this a little bit quicker, and again, because chief has expenses kind of rolling in as he starts all this, that normally it's like not a big deal, but it's kind of a big deal right now, 'cause he's starting from scratch, so. Okay, do we have a motion to approve, um, adding Police Chief Christopher Williamson to the Town of Ochetown credit card?
I make a motion we approve item number eighteen.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Brenda, may we have a roll call vote?
Howard Hacker.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
See, that motion carries.
Item number nineteen, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding giving Police Chief Christopher Williamson spending allowances up to five thousand dollars a month. Discussion.
Is that enough? Is five thousand enough?
It's a good starting point, I mean, with the purchases that the police department's gonna need, some of it will have to have more approval, some, but the smaller items, yeah.
What are some of the things that you anticipate that could run us up at five thousand a month, and I mean, again, I guess we gotta put a number on it, you gotta buy uniforms.
Right.
Um, what are the other types, I mean, I just think of taking people to coffee and it's always twenty bucks, but it's, it's, it's uniforms, give me some examples of what people see, I'm like, that's a lot of coffee, even I don't take that much coffee.
Is this fuel too?
No, that's a separate.
Fuel's gonna be on a separate deal.
So, we're, we're looking at uniforms, badges, shoulder patches, uh, duty belts, all the accessories, uh, we could even purchase the weapons.
Those will probably be over five, load on the board.
Look if we're doing them in small increments.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I mean, we will come to the board for approval on those larger ticket items.
But that's just the examples of the types of things that.
It would allow us to be able to purchase uniforms instead of having to wait for the next town meeting, um, it's gonna be necessities.
Right, I agree, I agree.
Uh, just so everybody noted, takes note that as the item is currently written, it's per month, so this is not on a per transaction basis. So, you will be capped out pretty quickly for the month, and, um, this is just the beginning too, right? So, we'll just reopen up, small.
Well, that was my concern, is just right now, knowing that this like next month may not be anything, but next month it is fifteen.
Make sure, good fiscal responsibility is being made, everything's kept track, and then as we encounter more purchases that need to be made faster, we can make a further petition to the board to increase that amount.
Okay, anything else?
Williamsburg.
Yeah.
You good?
Yeah, okay, we don't all have to agree every time, but I'd kinda like to have, make sure we've at least had good discussion.
You're exactly right.
Okay, alright, so do we have a motion to give Police Chief Christopher Williamson a spending allowance of up to five thousand dollars monthly?
I make that motion.
We have a motion by Brenda, may we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Hacker.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent. Brenda Walters.
Yes.
See, that motion carries.
Item number twenty, discussion, consideration, possible action, to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash two, a resolution of the Town of Ochetown recognizing certain roads within the municipal boundaries of the Town of Ochetown as public roads, and authorizing the maintenance of such roads by the Town of Ochetown. More discussion on roads.
I've got a brief update.
Okay.
So, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero-two allows for the town to acquire road maintenance easements on the roads located within the following subdivision. Sunrise Ridge, Canai Toby Trail South, Canai Toby Trails Southwest, Canai Toby Trails, Pine Hills North, Sunrise Ridge East, Timber Creek Trails South, Phase Seven. Uh, after this resolution is passed, and the easements are countersigned, uh, by the mayor and notarized by the clerk, uh, they will be filed at the county, well, first they'll be reviewed by our attorneys first, and then they'll be filed at the county, and then the town will be able to begin scheduling roadwork on those subdivisions.
And I've got one thing to say and one thing only, and that's at the very end of the resolution, therefore, I circle the word may, and that, that is a, that's a necessity, yes.
Yes, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's not, and we, we must, it is a may, so.
I think that's.
And I hope we do a whole lot of may.
I think that's a very, very good point, that was one of the concerns I have, I mean, yes, we immediately wanted roads to be fixed, because people can't drive here, but we don't want a long-term commitment to something that is not our responsibility, if we don't wanna take that on. So, absolutely, this is a year by year, may not now.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that, that resolves a potential jurisdictional issue for law enforcement, because many of the statutes are written up on a public street highway or road, if it's a private road, then they could make an argument, you don't have jurisdiction to do anything, so.
We've already had that discussion, yes, we have, so, you're, you're exactly right, you're exactly right, county.
Talking like a true prosecutor.
Okay, uh, any more on, on roads? I just think this is so exciting.
I am too, I'm excited to make a motion.
Yeah, okay.
It's time, we're finally get to do something over here.
Yeah, okay, uh, we have a motion by Howard to, uh, approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero-two, uh, of the Town of Ochetown recognizing certain roads within the municipal boundaries of the Town of Ochetown as public roads, and authorizing the maintenance of such roads by the Town of Ochetown. Motion by Howard, can we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brenda, roll call vote, please.
Howard Hacker.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
See, that motion carries.
Okay, um. Okay, item number twenty-one, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding the adoption of road design standards for the Town of Ochetown, designed by the Townsend Engineering Firm, Garber Engineering. Um, I think we got a little picture in our book here for us.
I've got something that I would like to.
Okay, uh, Adam, you wanna start our discussion?
Yes, please, um, so I actually request the board to table this item today, um, looking at it over the last couple of days, and going back with our, our planning firm as well. Um, we have a couple of, of items that we're a little bit concerned with, we've, there's instead of a fifty-foot right-of-way, there's sixty-foot right-of-way requirement, uh, we need to have further conversations about that. And then we need to have sp- uh, specified on certain items, like how it says that, uh, underneath, uh, uh, an under-pavement drainage structure, you have to have a metal piping. Well, we need to specify what type of material we'd like to see, so like corrugated metal pipes, C and B, so there are a couple of refinements that need to be made, uh, in that, uh, before I feel comfortable passing that, so, uh, uh, that's just kind of a work in progress for me. And it, it's a big deal, our roads here in this community are a big deal, and I wanna make sure that everything is, uh, is in alignment before we move to, to passing it.
Yeah, I wanna look at, uh, like, item number nineteen, roads designed for a minimum speed of twenty miles an hour. Which roads are we talking about for those?
I, I don't understand that question.
On item, we could, I mean, since we're, you, your suggestion that we go ahead and take no action on this today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I'll ask some more questions later, but let's go over the list, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got several highlights too, so.
Okay, so, um, any more discussion, y'all wanna discuss this anymore before we move this offline for, okay, we're gonna take no action on item number twenty.
Make a motion, take no action.
Okay, Howard makes a motion to take no action, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chad, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Hacker.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
See, that motion carries.
Item number twenty-two, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement to provide the Town Administrator with the authorization to apply for and sign any documents for appropriation requests involving infrastructure projects. Um, I wa- I wanna start the discussion on this, there are items that are coming up at state and federal levels, and we just wanna make sure that Adam has the opportunity to go ahead and get started on those, because there's some really quick deadlines that come up with those. So, that's, that's the intent of the agenda item, any more discussion on that? Do we have a motion to approve the Town Administrator with the authorization to apply for and sign documents for appropriation requests?
I make a motion to approve item number twenty-two.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Chad, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Hacker.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
See, that motion carries.
Adam has lots of good experience in this area, he's already proven that experience to us, so let's let him go to work. Item number twenty-three, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding selection of a payment processing service provider for the Town of Ochetown, another exciting item. Adam, you wanna walk us through this one?
Yeah, absolutely. So actually, I'm gonna ask that, uh, Carissa makes a presentation to us today with regards to our payment processors that we've gone through, uh, interviewed, and, uh, what we'll be recommending to the board.
Alright, man.
So would you like to start off first?
Thank you, Adam. Um, we spoke with five different municipalities in Oklahoma, including places like Edmond, Norman, Brokenville, Idabel, um, and we got an idea of how they process their payments both in-house and online. So then we did some research into those companies. Uh, we looked into ten different payment processors, and we had a top two that are actually in your binder. Uh, since creating your binders, we narrowed that down to one, uh, for several different reasons. Of the ten, only two integrated with Civic Plus, and those two aren't really ideal for permits. So we moved on with Ford, which you'll see in your binder. It does integrate with Civic Plus. It can be online within two to four weeks. You will have to purchase a point of sale system. It ranges from one hundred and seventy-nine dollars to four hundred and ninety-nine. That is a requirement by all payment processors. The Civic Plus annual fee will be a total of one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-three cents, um, and they did waive the integration fee of more than three thousand dollars. The Ford fee to work with that payment processor is zero on the town unless you choose to absorb the fee from the, the payee.
The transaction.
Mhm. Um, Ford is ideal for all departments, specifically, specifically for us permits. They also help with taxes, uh, parks and rec, utilities, et cetera. So there's three different models with Ford that y'all will have to make a decision on. Do we want the service fee, the absorb fee, or a hybrid? So you'll see this on their little chart, I believe it's paid before.
I'm having a hard time finding who you are.
Chad's got it. What page is that, Chad?
This one here?
Mhm.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
CSG is what I'm.
Oh, yes, it's confusing. CSG Ford.
Okay, I'm back with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
The service fee quote for credit cards, um, means that the service fee will be put onto the person making the purchase. Um, and then for ACH, there'll be a flat fee. The absorb fee quote is where the town will absorb the credit card fee and the ACH fee. The hybrid is where the purchaser will pay for the credit card fees and the town will absorb the ACH fees.
Where's the, where's the hybrid at?
Yeah, um.
Cause you've got your absorb, and you've got your service.
I have the ACH, the processing, and that's all I have here. Well. Yeah, I was gonna say, I just got some of this this morning, so.
So what is, uh, the payment processor package that the town is recommending at this time? Um, I, I, I can personally.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, the, the staff is recommending approval of the Ford package, which puts the transaction onto the payee. So there's a, a percentage charge on that should be listed, uh, and that's on a per transaction basis. Uh, Ford originally, uh, had some costs that were gonna be incurred upfront by the town. Um, their competitors did not. Um, however, uh, Ford was still heavily able to integrate with Civic Plus. And all of this, uh, selecting a payment processor behind it is about making it convenient for people to pay for their permits, for them to come in and get their license, for them to apply for whatever service that they need to purchase from the town. We want, if we're going to have regulations, we want to have, following those regulations, be as simplified for the end user as possible. And, uh, Ford is basically the, I mean, they are tied in with Civic Plus, and so they are, are easy to integrate. It can be online very quickly, uh, with Civic Plus, uh, to get their transaction software, um, operational.
And Civic Plus does a lot of municipalities, is that not correct?
Yes.
You know, recommended by OML. I mean, that gives me some comfort that we're not picking a processor that does T-shirts or whatever.
Right.
We're doing municipal processing here.
And the reason why integration with Civic Plus is so important is because we purchased the community development model from Civic Plus. So having that, all of our permitting, licensing systems, and other miscellaneous services will be online through the website. And so it is, it is pivotal that we select a payment processor that can handle and talk to that and communicate with, with their systems.
So what, what towns did you guys talk to that use Ford?
Um, actually, none of them.
Actually, yeah, none, none of the municipalities in, in Oklahoma had used Ford. Uh, it's surprising because just about every municipality that we reached out to, which we've reached out to about five or six or so, um, everybody uses different ones.
And multiple.
That's the thing. And then also on top of that, not every municipality has a Civic Plus website.
Right.
Right, right.
And then even, even if you do have a Civic Plus website, not every municipality has the community development model, so it's not really important that all of those information systems communicate with each other.
Oh, so there's some advantages to being new? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, you can build from the, from the ground up, uh, systems that talk to each other and aren't gonna be confusing and are streamlined and easy for the end user.
So you did say pass the cost on to?
On to the transaction, the, the, yeah.
The service, the service fee model.
But I'm assuming. Yeah, but I'm assuming that anyone could still walk in, pay by check.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we can still take check. Uh, we don't take cash in town hall. Uh, we don't carry any on hand cash or anything like that. We can take cat, we can take check right now, uh, and hopefully after we get our payment processor selected, we can take card.
Right.
I like to agree.
Okay, any more discussion on getting this online stuff? This is exciting stuff.
Civic, Civic Plus had waived the thirty, uh, thirty-three twenty-one setup for prorated.
I think Ford waived that, or something.
Yeah, CSG Ford.
Ford waived that.
Yeah.
Well.
On, on page two of three, at the very top of it, it says initial term, beginning and signing end of four fourteen twenty-five, renewal term four fifteen each year after that. Uh, that's April fifteenth. Here we are in March. Should we sign this now, or are we gonna do this upfront and then have to do it again in another month?
We can do, we can have it extended.
Do we?
Or we can, we can delay the go-live down.
Or do we just delay the go-live until April fifteenth? Or, or can they adjust their start date?
Yeah. Yeah, we can, uh, we can give them a call and we can do either one.
Uh, that would be my only concern, is if we, if we, if we, if we approve this today, you call them tomorrow and get signed up.
I mean, it's, it's still gonna take them approximately four weeks to go online anyways. So by the time that they could be functional, you know, we will be into.
If we approve the dates, they go live April fif- April fourteen, I'm good with that, or April fifteen?
They'll probably prorate it. I don't, I don't see them charging twice. Yeah.
Yeah.
They'll probably just.
That was my only question.
Adam can call them and get that answered.
You keep an eye on the house.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Any more discussion on going online? There we go, okay. Um, do we have a motion to approve selecting the, um, board payment processing service provider for the town of Cochatown?
I'll make a motion that we accept CSG Ford.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd, may we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Chad, may we have a roll call vote please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
And that motion carries.
Thank you, Carissa, for your diligence.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-four, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection amendment and or postponement regarding approval of the Cochatown Police Department's badge design. Okay, I got, I got one. Anybody got one?
It's the one you have, I think it's the one we're gonna buy.
I got three.
Okay, I got three now.
Okay.
I like the third one.
I like number three. Well, I know, but which one's number three?
Uh, well, the big one, the big picture.
Okay, this one?
That's the three that we have.
Okay.
Now I do have a question on this that has, uh, red Xs.
That's just.
I already asked that question.
Do I?
That's if they're out.
Okay.
They do that so you can't steal their report.
Gotcha.
One of the discussions that we've had is, let's just get the guys and gals a badge, and then when we really know what our, um, comprehensive plan looks like, what is our marketing? We may need to redo this in a year, but the guys need to be able to have something they can start with.
I like this design.
So. I'm not crazy about this design, but I think it gets us moving down the road.
The Texans will appreciate the lone star.
Well, like I said, I'm not a, I'm, I'm not a fan of the badge at all, but I'm a fan of getting him a badge. So, any more discussion on whether you wanna see more designs?
This is the, this is, this is the only, so it's not, this is not a design?
Yes, this, this is one. It's, they're just, they were, they were, you know, you're getting different graphics, which is why they're part of me. I mean, what's that a picture of?
Yeah, I don't really know. I like that. I like this one.
Yeah, I do, I like that first one.
Um, Chris, can you come up here for a minute?
Yeah, the first one's green. It's got the state of Oklahoma.
I like, I like it.
I like it.
Can you tell me what that is?
I'm assuming.
It's a what if you hear that?
And then you'll have.
Officer's wings are white up here. Like this one.
That's an eagle?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I say that?
Like I said, I think we just getting.
Yeah.
This is, this is not the, the final branding. This is just to get us, to be able to launch and get us started until, uh, till we find a final branding for the police department.
And then in a hundred years, it becomes the rare first design in the collective.
I think we have to wait for branding. What?
This one, I don't know.
I believe you have another question.
I'm good with that one.
The only one, I like the eighteen thirty-two and the twenty twenty-two, um,
Yeah, I think too.
But, you know, it's, I mean, we either need to say, um, you know, founded and established very similar to what we have, because otherwise it was like we stopped in twenty twenty-two and we're done. You know, we lasted from eighteen thirty-two to twenty. So it needs to be a little clearer, and that may be too much for a badge.
Maybe.
You know, but like I said, I think we can work on these a lot more with some professionals that do design work, and get something that speaks to our needs. But for today, I think he needs a badge that says something.
My, uh, question, I've got product overview, first line says Seale Ray. Is, is, what is that? Is it, is that a gold badge with black, or is that silver with black, or is that gold with blue? What is that?
Silver.
Silver.
That's a silver?
Silver badge with a black letter.
Do we have anything we can do besides the Texas star in the middle?
Well, that's the seal of Oklahoma.
Like I said, Texas star.
Well, I could say something, but I'm not.
Is that, is that pretty typical that you have the seal of the state on it?
It's pretty common that most law enforcement.
Does not require.
For simplicity to.
I'm just used to seeing, the very ever bad I've ever seen is gold with black. I don't know why we're going with silver.
I don't know. What does Chris like?
What color do you like?
Personally, I don't have a preference. I just need something that identifies.
Very PC.
Would like for it to have some representation of Cochatown and, and some of our ancestry, some of our Indian ancestry here.
And I don't think I'm seeing that in any of this.
Well, the, the last one is.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I just think, pick one, because they're all awful.
If we have, uh, if we had.
Our town logo.
We what?
Looks like.
I mean, can we get the town logo in the middle?
That would be too busy.
It looks like that.
They are superheroes.
They are superheroes.
Alright.
Mayor.
They're all pretty.
Wait, hang on, hang on.
They're all pretty.
I, I love the, the last one that has.
Oh, hey, hang on. I'm gonna keep it to a board discussion.
Yes. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, since we were incorporating.
Yeah.
Others.
Right, board discussion with our police chief.
Never mind.
Any more discussion from the board?
Sorry, is there a motion? Are we ready for a motion?
I don't know. I think we're still discussing. Ready?
Make a motion, we accept item number three, for the badge.
Howard.
Silver and black.
I'll second that motion.
Are we through with discussion?
Yeah, this, this will be a temporary.
Temporary badge.
This is temporary badge.
You can change it.
Temporary badge.
Temporary badge until we get all of our comprehensive plan and marketing in such in place.
You got a motion in a second?
Okay, we have a motion by Brenda, and we have a second by Todd.
Todd, could you repeat your motion?
We're going with the.
I make motion.
Uh, we have a motion by Brenda, we have a second by Todd to accept the.
To accept number three, and this is what we're calling number three.
The three with the, uh, the badge with the three stripes through the middle. That's the motion on the table. May we have a roll call vote please?
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Motion first.
I think it'll look better once it's actually in, finished. Okay, so when you're looking at, with this being a printout, you know it's. Cause these other, the other, the first one has a little bit more.
Well, like I said, I'll be glad when we get our comp plan done and we can revisit this.
Yeah, yeah, well, I think it'll look good.
Just cover them up under your vest, alright? Okay, item number twenty-five, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection amendment and or postponement regarding selection of a base retirement plan for employees for the town of Cochatown. Um, who worked on this? Was that Brenda that did all the work on this one?
Christine. Here's the notes from our meeting, right there.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you, you wanna speak, or you want me?
Yeah, yeah, I can speak. Yeah, sure. Okay, um, so Brenda and I, over the last couple of weeks, uh, we contacted Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, uh, to create, uh, since we don't currently have one, a baseline retirement plan for our base employees. Um, so working with Kevin Darrow over there, who is their, one of their accounts managers, um, he shot us back a, a couple of different ideas. Uh, we jumped on, uh, several, uh, conference calls with Kevin, uh, over the last couple of weeks, and we were kinda going back and forth.
And EDPs as well.
Yeah, yeah, and then we've also included, um, yeah, other retirement fund management, uh, folks that, that, uh, that I'm, I'm professional friends with, are professional acquaintances, and they're in other states as well, um, and got some opinion back. And then also, um, one of my mentors, uh, Tim Brady serves on the board of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, and we had an opinion from him as well, and some guidance, and kind of helped Brenda and I, uh, in creating our, our presentation to you today.
And our, our, our goal overall is to make sure that we're taking care of our employees, and we want to be able to present them with, with a nice retirement plan, uh, that they can contribute to as always, or in addition to what we, we pay in for them, so.
Absolutely. And then there's the notes right there.
So what you have in your packet is actually an, an earlier proposal that was sent to us, and, um, this didn't reflect exactly what we felt like we had spoken about, and so, um, it's correct, and, 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 and most of the document is that this would be a defined contribution plan rather than a defined benefit. You know, a defined benefit would be you, which you, when you retire at sixty-five, you're gonna draw, you know, so much money per month. Retired contribution is, it's your own contributions plus, plus the match from your employer that combine, and then when you retire, you have this lump sum of money and investments that you then choose how to.
What did you, what did you guys, what did you, um, I'm s- I'm assuming you guys scaled other municipalities to see what they were, what their average contribution is, because seven seems a little high to me. Um, I'm just curious on what other municipalities are doing? Are they doing three, five, seven?
I believe I checked with one that was doing, uh, ten or twelve.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're really kind of all over the grid. Every municipality does it differently. As a matter of fact, uh, over this last weekend, uh, the mayor of the town of Washington, Joel Syria, reached out to me, and they're creating a retirement plan as well, and they were looking at a required ten percent salary contribution from the employee, and then a, and then a match from the town of ten percent, so that's twenty percent total. So it could really range, uh, you can build out and modify our plan to anything that we would like, and we can also change it, uh, during any, any board meeting as well as we go forward.
So, again, what you have here is not what we had felt is what we would want. So what we came up with is, we wanted it to be a mandatory contribution, because that makes it free tax for the employees for their contribution. Uh, but we didn't want to have a seven percent mandatory match, uh, some employees. So the mandatory would be at least one percent, and then we would match that one percent, and then they can contribute up to seven percent or more that we don't match.
But that's not, that's not the case on this.
But that's not what we're seeing.
No, that's what I'm trying to describe to you, is what we did approve was.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
What we, what we came up with.
So do you have something that we can look at of what you're actually approving, of what you're actually recommending?
It's all, it's all going to be verbal. We, uh, Kevin hasn't drafted, uh, anything new or in writing yet. We can provide to him what we're wanting, and then he builds it out based upon what we send to him.
So should we wait? Should we?
We can. We can uh approve this and give me the directive to communicate with Kevin from OKMRF and then facilitate what we've came up with uh through our meetings here. And what this is, is Brenda, if, if I may, uh, the mandatory two with the two con- two matching or are you wanting to do one? I mean, this is still really up to the board's decision. We're bringing this to you guys today to initiate a conversation. You can literally build it out however you'd like and whatever you're comfortable with.
You are right, yes, we did do initial, the, the employees, the initial mandatory contribution would be two percent.
Right here.
Do we have a copy of that?
It's right there.
Initial contribution of two percent, that we would match two percent and then at the very bottom.
Oh, okay.
And then uh the employee, then we would consider, we would continue a match of a max of seven percent. So, we're not doing automatically seven percent.
Okay, yeah, I'm not matching this at all. Okay.
We're, we're matching, we're matching one to one depending on the employer or employee depending on what they want to put in.
Basically, but the initial mandatory for the employees is two percent, so we'll do two percent.
Why would you make it mandatory that an employee?
Participate?
Participate.
Because then the entire program is a pre-tax participation. If it's not mandatory, then, then you're, you're giving after-tax contributions rather than pre-tax. Most, most contribution plans are set up as a pre-tax one.
I understand the pre-tax, but what if you have an employee that just says, I don't want a retirement plan, I want every penny I get?
It's a mandatory plan, they'd be required to contribute.
And we're looking, we, we.
As an employee, if I was an employee down in Ho Chi Town, as an employee, I will be, it will be mandatory that I contribute to it.
Whatever you establish as mandatory will be mandatory as your terms of employment.
And we, we discussed that and we had discussions with other uh entities about that. Um, discussions about where we are right now with our staff, but we're trying to again look towards the future. Uh, two percent's not much to contribute to a plan if it's pre-tax.
What, what do other municipalities, how many other municipalities have a required contribution plan?
Hundreds. I mean, there's, at the time, I can get you a list if you'd like. I can get more information from OKMRF.
Probably any of them, they have a retirement plan.
You think that they're, that they're mandatory?
I can get you a, a list if you'd like.
For the tax.
I'm just trying to, percent wise, you know, how, how many municipalities require participation?
I can get you that information from OKMRF if we ask for it.
What do y'all think?
Let's take.
I mean, I think, I think we're still going to discuss.
If you're talking about twenty, if you're looking at a thousand dollars, you're looking at twenty dollars going to your retirement plan.
We, we just want to find, we want to find out. You know, that um, that plan that.
We'll all have Kevin drafted up on a document and then I'll have him write it up how Brenda and I have discussed. Uh, ideally, um, what we had came up with in theory was a two percent mandatory contribution, the town matches two percent. And if the employee would like to engage in further contributions to the retirement plan, then the town does a one-to-one percentage match up to five percent. So, that's seven percent total out of the town's pocket and seven percent, if you do the maximum, right? And seven percent out of the employee's pocket, so that's fourteen percent total going to your retirement. And so, if, if you don't really care about retirement and you don't want to have your, 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 your pocketbook hit, your, your paycheck's hit, you could just keep it at the two percent. But if you really want that retirement and if that mistake is something that you care about, then you can extend that and take advantage of what the town's offering to you. That's what we've developed in our plan and if you would like for that to be drafted in an OKMRF document before you feel comfortable with it, I can make that happen for you.
Let's, let's go back to, um, I'm kind of like Howard, you know, I mean, let's suppose we hire somebody old and, you know, we're not interested in a retirement plan, uh, and we don't want to contribute that two percent. Why can't, why can't we have? You can participate if you want to, but why are you saying that, are you saying it affects everybody if one person says, I don't want to?
You have to choose the plan that's pre-tax or.
The, the internal revenue code requires it to be mandatory when we.
Okay, so it's gonna be.
Wrong point.
They're trying to set a minimum of two percent. You can set a minimum of one percent if you want and that's ten dollars per thousand, so it's just such a minute amount and.
Now, now they would, now they understand that. I'm, I'm happy with that. I mean, I know that it's mandatory. Like it or not, it's mandatory. But I see in this one that I'm looking at, that I got in my book, uh, it talks about vesting. And it took me a while to try to figure this out, but now you've got X's in here, this is, I'm assuming this is what was proposed.
Where are you at?
Yeah.
I am eight page, exhibit eight, page four.
Okay. Yeah, I asked about the vesting also.
Top is number ten, vesting. Got nothing up there, dropped down to E and that's got an X in it. There's, there's, there's what these people are saying, I like that vesting a part of.
And that was based on our discussions and our selection of the five percent.
Okay, good.
Yes. Um, and then, and then several do seven. And again, we were thinking of possibly an older employee who may want to, you know, just be here several years and so then they're fully vested at five years and can withdraw completely everything that we were.
Does this start on a, on their anniversary date or at every six months or how does this go? Does it go on calendar year or their uh employment date year?
That's by your design. Um, typically, you want to start it between three and six months of employment, probably about six. So, your, your employee passes the probationary period, but again, you can set those variables yourself.
Okay.
On the, uh, on the vesting, if it's less than their five years, do they at least get their two percent that they put in?
They won't get the full amount. They have to do a full five years. It's not.
You can say they're, it's, it's graduated.
I know, but what I'm saying is, so let's say somebody works for three years and you've taken two percent out of it, they lose their two percent of their own.
They lose, they lose a portion of it, yes.
Okay.
A portion.
That's the encouragement.
What do you mean a portion? Wouldn't it be all?
Because, yeah, it's, it should be broken down and there.
It's broken down.
Depends on how long.
Two years, three years, four years, five years.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry, I was on, I was on the option, same, sorry, my bad, my bad.
But if they're eight percent vested, they might be losing twenty percent of the two percent they, they contributed, but they're also gaining the two percent that the town.
Oh, I know. Yeah, yeah.
They're not losing.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, that's good, I get that.
It's kind of like an encouragement. You want your employees to be long-term, you want your employees to be here for as long as possible. We want to create a culture where we're taking care of our people and, um, Brenda and I felt like this plan, uh, with how customizable it is based upon the employee and what they're wanting to do, um, is, uh, reflects that.
And again, if, you know, long-term service is part of the goal, you know, and I see this as a hundred percent vested of, after five years, like what were some of the others doing like in seven years?
Most of them do longer. Most of them do seven.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, seven to seven to ten years even, some of them.
That's what I was saying, seven to ten.
And you're saying they jump every time if it was accumulated or moving.
But again, we were thinking, as you mentioned earlier, you know, what if we have an older employee who's here for several years and you want them to be able to take advantage of the benefits and, and then we want to be special, so it's two five.
Well, we are special.
But we also want to be a good steward of the town's resources. If we're putting this kind of money in, we want them to stay to work for the town and I think we do have good benefits. I think we're offering good salaries. I think that's been evident. Asking them in return for a seven-year commitment is, is pretty fair. You know, like I said, a lot of them have ten-year for full vesting.
I believe when I was still in the, working in retirement systems, at that time, many that previously had ten-year had, had converted to seven.
I'm pretty happy with seven.
Yeah, me too.
But this says five.
Yes, we, we had chose, we had chose.
That's, that's often generous. I mean, I think seven is, I think seven takes care of your town. And again, it's still a sliding scale, not a hundred percent at seven.
Well, I think we could present two proposals.
Yeah. I mean, again, this, this whole plan is, is customizable. So, whatever we need that we feel like truly reflects what we're trying to, how we're trying to take care of our employees, we just communicate that with OKMRF and they will produce the documents that reflect that.
So, that's it. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm reading, I'm reading it ruined. I ain't going to go seven, this says five. So, are we gonna sit here and try to dictate you a plan so you can put it in real paper and bring back to us or?
Yeah.
What is, what is the, what is the motion that needs to be made here?
Um, I've got the motion written down, uh, recommended motion for me, um, right down on there. You'll just need to change the vesting period.
Thank you, take that piece of paper out.
Diane has the dog.
Oh.
Yep, that's it on the back page right there at the bottom. And then you'll just need to change the vesting period to whatever the board is satisfied with.
Can I look at that again? Cause it's not matching my agenda.
Hang on just a second.
I'm not sure that this is enough information. The record, so if we change agenda item number twenty-five. Recommended approval of retirement plan with uh Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund contingent upon attorney makes changes to the ordinance and all associated documents to reflect the following. A mandatory two percent employee contribution with a two percent match from the town with an optional one-to-one match with employees up to five percent matched. An investing period of five years.
To me, that's confusing.
Like I said, do we want to?
Two percent mandatory and then five, you said a maximum of seven. That tells me a maximum of five.
No, it was two percent match with the employee plus an additional one-to-one for an additional five.
For an additional five.
Of up to five, up to five. Do we maybe want to take no action and? Put some more thought into what these benefits look like? We're gonna have them for a long time.
Well, this can be changed in the future as well, so. There has been a lot of research and conversations.
But we haven't seen it.
It is appreciated.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Today's the first time I've seen this. Okay, we have a motion by Chad to take no action. Do we have a second?
No second.
We have a motion by Chad to table this for right now. We have a second by Brenda and we have a roll call vote.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Diane McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, let's look at this some more. Agenda item number twenty-six, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and or postponement regarding the application for the WEX Sourcewell Government Fleet Card Program for Ho Chi Town Police Department. Adam or Chief, you guys want to talk to us about this? This is our fuel projects.
I think Julie's ready to talk about that. Alright.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, working at a, a government, government before, we always had a gas, um, card and, um, I have researched and we, I came up with WEX and I, uh, Sandy at Goldspeed, they use this as well and, um, up to ninety-five percent of gas stations use this. So, Easy Mart's loves, Casey's, Walmart, Murphy's accepts it. Uh, this just simplifies transactions, so officers don't need to carry cash or worry about reimbursements, waiting for a whole month to get their money back. And it keeps from them having to turn in receipts, which yes, they still should, but with the WEX program, I'll have all of that information in the back, on the back end of it. Um, it can actually, I can assign, it can be assigned how much fuel is, um, like Officer One and Two, they can only fill up two tons a day at sixty-five dollars, whatever that is. Um, and it can be assigned to who, um, which vehicle and, um, like I said, it can set limits on what can be purchased. Um, restrictions can be, uh, made as certain type of fuel, so only unleaded or unleaded plus for the vehicles. It can even do that. Um, it, we will get a discount. It won't show it at the pump, but once we get the statement, um, it will show a discounted rate of, you know, what we got.
Whatever that, that state or federal tax is, we're exempt from as a municipality.
Correct. Um, and it's like up to fifteen percent discount. Um, and like I said, electronic trails of all transactions, um, will be on the back end, so I'm not having to chase down officers with their receipts or anything. And it can be applied to their department in their, um, annual budgets. Um, but yeah.
How do you, um, track which vehicle is being fueled?
It can't like, so like on the back office of it, so like the administrator part, I can assign card one to that vendor to truck one and that officer's name and set card two to second vehicle with officer's name.
My question is, how do we know that they're not filling up their personal card with their card? How do you, how do you track which vehicle it is?
When you enter those, swap those cards, you have to enter, input a PIN number?
PIN number.
And also the mileage for the vehicle.
Miles.
Yes.
Same as Fuel Man, I used to carry Fuel Man.
Gotcha, okay.
So, yeah, when you stick that card in there, you've got to enter certain codes, spins and mileage on the vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
My question is, if we approve this, should we go ahead and just approve it for all municipal departments or do we leave it at just the police department now and have to come back later and approve it for other departments?
What department?
Just for the police department for now and as the police department gets online, we can just forward it then on their own unit.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, and also too, like, if it's lost or stolen, I can easily log in or Chief can log in and disable the card. So, if we can't find it, it can just automatically be disabled and not have to call a one-eight-hundred number and wait forever to get it disabled. Um, and it can tell you like if there is.
Can you stand up?
Yeah, it can tell you. So, like I said, it does a max of, you can do a max of however many fuel transactions, but it also give real-time alerts. So, he'll get alert saying, hey, Officer One fueled up at sixty-five dollars at this time at this place. Um, and if he's like, okay, well, he's not on duty, then you know that there's misuse of the vehicle of the car.
Hey, I was just asking.
And it can be disabled.
Officers will also check out in CAD when they do a fuel and give the mileage, whatever they're checking out on. So, we have some checks and balances as well.
Alright, any more discussion on gassing up these cars? Okay, do we have a motion?
One more question. Yeah, like, like what I say in the, yeah, I will, but one more question is to clarify. We got two vehicles now, we just get two cards. How easy is it to get another card if we bring in another officer or, or are the cards for the vehicles or for the officers? How do you do that?
Depends on how we want to set it up.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like.
I would say assign them to a unit.
That's fine.
Each individual owner. They may share a vehicle and they just have, have separate PIN numbers so we know who's using the card.
Yeah, based on the information you gave, if you're gonna have to, when you, if you're gonna have to punch in the mileage with that card, it needs to stay at the vehicle instead of an officer, cause otherwise you get a different vehicle and has a different mileage on it.
Right, yes, okay.
And they will throw flags if.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm doing.
Do we have a motion to approve the application for the WEX Sourcewell Government Fleet Card Program for the Ho Chi Town Police Department?
I'll make the motion to approve, item number twenty-six.
We have a motion by Todd. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Chad. We have a roll call vote, please.
Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Diane McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, skip number twenty-seven. Item number twenty-eight, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, or postponement regarding the memorandum of understanding for dispatch services, use of the GeoSafe system between the town of Ho Chi Town and the McCurton County Sheriff's Office. MOU for GeoSafe, who wants to talk to us?
This MOU, uh, was drafted by Attorney Liz George and entering into these MOUs with Sheriff's Office for their dispatch services saves a tremendous amount of money on the town of Ho Chi Town and the police department without having that zone communication center. Also with, uh, adding the, us to their GeoSafe, we'll have the ability to see where park, parks, Broken Bow, Idabel, anybody, everybody in McCurton County will, will be able to see where everybody's at. will, will be able to see where everybody's at, as far as GPS tracking, stuff of that nature. It, uh, opens us up to having CAD capabilities for computer, uh, dispatching through the Sheriff's Office. It also opens us up for having ticket riders later on, when we get to that.
Do we know what the program share is?
I believe it is.
Didn't miss it, I didn't see it.
No, it's not.
Under the contract, it said, it said, based on the number of users under the county's membership, the county would include Mark Cruise, EMS, et cetera, correct?
I'm not sure about that, I know that the, all the Leo's, the law enforcement.
Okay.
Uh, I know all the, I think I'm saying this right, all the, uh, fire departments in McCurton County work under this.
Okay.
I know most of them.
Which would lessen the pro-rata share.
Yes.
Because they're more.
They would just still like to know what that share is.
So there's, uh, one-time setup fee of fifty dollars for each user. And then the town will pay an additional twenty-five dollars per user per month.
And is our users gonna be, um, full-time, part-time, and reserve, so we could be paying, you know, up to seven, even though we may not call them all the time?
They would, would it be user or by unit?
Uh, it's by user.
By user.
They have to be.
So that could be, I could, uh. But not all reserves would necessarily be a user of this?
Not necessarily.
You got traffic control reserves out there, they may not need this. Okay. The dates need to be changed to twenty twenty-five throughout the document.
I think, I think that's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be by user person.
Mm-hmm.
You, you may have, you may have a special event out here, you may have every police officer and all seven of the reserves out there.
That's what I'm thinking.
Are we gonna have enough radios for all of them to have a radio? I think a radio is a user. And then you know it's what it is, the fire department is by, by officer or by, if they have a radio or, or if they have that on their phone, that's the way it's done.
Yeah, Geo, the GeoSafe is, does have, uh, Apple and Android capabilities, so they wouldn't necessarily have to have a radio.
Exactly, but is that, but, may not have a radio, is capable of going Android or Apple, but is that Apple or Android considered a user?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it would be by user per month.
So this is just a draft for the Board's approval, uh, that we, the Board approves it, we'll send it to the Sheriff's Office and get their approval, if they have any changes, we will come back to you.
Okay.
I think it's a necessary, another one that was necessary, the items in that guy.
Yes, sir.
Is yours, yours missing?
Yeah.
I've already made notes.
Missing a call or no call?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, dates are easy to pick, but my concern here is that we agree to pay the pro-rata share, but it doesn't tell us what that share is. In this case, I need a certain percent, I mean, we could have fifteen users, we could have, you know, we could, Tulsa, they have a huge contingency of reserve officers.
It says it's for the town to pay the county.
It may not even be using, right?
Handle each dispatch made, do we know what that is?
Yeah, yeah.
And as I said, he doesn't know what the pro-rata share is.
Okay. Per call fee, I guess.
Yeah, I, I am very.
Free, we want for the Sheriff's Office and the warehouse to track that information.
Okay.
I think it would need to be a, a monthly or annual fee.
Oh, so that, that's, that's an option?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you.
So we choose either A or B? Why she's not?
Like I said, this is, this is just a, a rough draft, it still has to go to the Sheriff's Office for their approval, if they have any changes or I mean, that's what they would like to see. We will come back to the Board for final approval.
So that dispatch, that dispatch service fee will be, I guess, is that gonna be something that what is it, will we get that number out?
You may have missed our conversation, I'm sorry. He just answered that he would prefer, or it makes more sense to him than having a cost per call, that we agree to a certain fee per year.
Okay. Okay.
Either a monthly or an annual fee.
And is that included in here anywhere? Yeah, I think this needs more work.
Those are, those are questions I've asked of the Sheriff's Office and have not got their response.
Well, and I don't think that they, um, at this point, they can't even identify which calls are coming from Ho Chi Minh anyway. Cause they're all based on zip code, we've already had that discussion, they can't even identify the call that comes from Ho Chi Minh. So, I think this needs some more work.
And, yeah, I'd also mention that, does this include the Light Horse, does this include the Choctaw Nation as reserve officers?
No.
Okay, all right, I, that's, are they, they're not dispatched through that agreement? For assistance, okay.
Yeah, this one's on the screen.
Okay.
So specifically, our concerns to present to Liz, cause she threw this up, correct?
It's the total answer, pro-rata valuation, and then deflecting the correct dates.
And the dispatch service to the.
And the dispatch service.
You, and, Liz, no, this, but you need to identify the pro-rata. There needs to be a mention of how that is determined and at what basis, because you can cancel this as it exists within thirty, with thirty days notice, but if the pro-rata is annual and you don't like it, you cancel, they're gonna say, well, yeah, but you agreed to play, pay a pro-rata annual, isn't based on annual or monthly service, that needs to be determined.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Yes, okay. So we want some clear, uh, dates to be updated, Adam, uh, I had made the cost on dispatch services or a monthly or annual fee or quarterly fee, which I think is probably a good idea since they can't handle ours anyway, and what the pro-rata share is, and the twenty-five dollars per user, I think we just want some better definition around per user.
Yeah.
Anything else we wanna add to this?
Yeah, yeah.
Brendan, anything else? All right, so do we wanna have a motion to approve based on Liz approving our changes, or do we wanna see this again?
Well, I think we, we'll still have to do some discovery on the.
We've got a lot of stuff here.
We'll have to do some discovery on the total amounts that are going to incur, and there's, I mean, what if it's a, a number that you don't agree with?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, they kinda got us over a battle, cause we really need them to.
Yeah.
We do need them, um, but, um.
So, but we just need to know what those numbers are.
We do a special meeting if we have to.
Let's just bring it back.
Okay, and I'd like to know what they're, it says, you know, that they invoice this annually, I'd like to know what they've been invoicing in the past from these others, so.
The other units.
Yeah.
And under that, under that cancellation, uh, within thirty days notice to, by either party, there needs to be, if you do terminate it, and hopefully it works or you don't, but if you terminate it you need to know how the costs are applied on termination, is it on a pro, pro-day basis, or is it just the pro-rata for the year or whatever? Then there, there needs to be a paragraph that says, upon termination, costs shall be assessed as follows, and tell that formula.
That said, I'm gonna take a mo-, I'm gonna make a motion to take no action.
Okay, we have a motion by Howard to take no action, we have a second by Chad, may we have a roll call vote, please?
A second.
Howard Haggard?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent? Brenda Walters?
Yeah.
Yeah, motion carries.
Okay, item twenty-nine, discussion, consideration, and possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding the addition of two new police vehicles to the Town of Ho Chi Minh Town's existing O M A G, Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group insurance policy. We bought them, we need to insure them. That's pretty much it, any more discussion?
The bigger shit is, I can't believe you got a vote by angel.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we accept, uh, we approve item number twenty-nine.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd to approve adding the two police, new police vehicles to the Town of Ho Chi Minh Town's O M A G insurance policy, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Brendan, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries.
Um, item number thirty, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement regarding approval to enter into a commitment in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars for viewpoint project, project for production of marketing materials including television, social media, and related materials with expenditures to occur at a later date.
So.
We ready to start talking about our town?
If Adam wants to enlighten us on this opportunity, or how do we wanna do this, do we wanna talk about?
I, I think it's a, a very broad-based opportunity, uh, to provide some marketing materials for twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars, um, for our town. It's very specific to our town versus the McCurton County tourism that does everybody for everything, and we know what we get for that, so. Adam, do you wanna say anything else about this?
I, I feel like you summarized, uh, what this is about, I mean, this is a, a marketing opportunity for Ho Chi Minh Town, um, if, if, if we are even selected for the opportunity, again, there's still an opportunity that it may not happen, uh, this is really just a commitment, this is not an expenditure at this time, um, and the Board can always choose to, uh, withdraw on the commitment as well at, at any time.
This is the pub, the public TV that we talked about, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We said it's not a commitment, but it's an approval to enter in.
It is a, it is a commitment, um, it's a statement of commitment, but it's not an expenditure at this time. So you're not being invoiced for anything, um, if, if you're not selected for the opportunity, then you'll never incur an expense. Um, uh, and then also, the Board can withdraw their commitment or interest, uh, in the opportunity as well.
So we're having a, um, assuming a Zoom or phone call with them at some point, where we follow up on what the, um, plans are. Just to me, I mean, I understand what you're, the, I don't know anything about what viewpoint projects are offering.
Yeah.
You know, I'm di- I'm just saying, I haven't seen anything on it, it's, it's a lot of money to be spending on a particular project, and it would just be nice to have either a presentation or some sort of.
Yeah, I think we can, yeah, I think that we can get that arranged, um, tomorrow.
I mean, I, I mean, if you, if you vetted it, it looks good, but, you know, it'd be nice to follow.
I have a phone call with him.
Yes, great, okay.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll make a motion, we approve item number thirty.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Howard, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries.
Okay, Adam and I'll get to work on that. Um, agenda item number four, public comment, audience may address the Board in accordance with rules and procedures set forth in Ho Chi Minh Resolution Number Ten. And we have Crystal Jocelyn, who would like to speak on agenda items eight through thirty.
Two, two-minute timer.
Yeah, and you have it, I mean, you have a two-minute limit.
I'm gonna move that to item number four.
You wanna go to item number four? Item number four is public comment. You have two minutes, are you ready, clock, clock holders?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, are you ready, Crystal?
I'm ready, I'm going.
Go.
Public comment doesn't do you any good if it's moved by the mayor to the end of the agenda. My questions were similar to yours, Chad, on the viewpoint project, I did do some research on that, and I'm actually in bear, in favor of that project, it's a really good one. It, um, there's a lot of good information, I did call up here and I also sent a, an email asking for some clarity to see if the viewpoint project I was looking up was the same viewpoint project that we were talking about twenty-nine thousand dollars for. Great project, um, like Dennis Quaid, and it's public TV, and it's a good service, however, again, on item number four doesn't do any good to have a public comment, if you're gonna move it to the end where you've already taken action on everything, then what's the point of having a public comment? We fought for a long time to get public comment moved and put onto the, onto this agenda, so that we could bring our concerns and, or have a comment. But it seems that because I was the only one who signed up, I was singled out, it was moved to the end, that's never been done by this Board before, and I think that's unacceptable.
Okay, our next public speaker is Scott Bowling, and he would like to address number thirteen. Scott's not here, okay, we have Troy Herod that would like to speak on item number thirteen. He's not here, okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Real quick, uh, we don't have it on there.
Oh, do we have new, where's our, where's our, new business?
It's not on there, but, could we go ahead, could I add an item?
I, I think, I think we need to add a, um, agenda item number thirty, new business, for sure that's on our, no, we can't do it?
Yeah.
There's no new business.
There's no new business on there.
So we can't have it?
It's not open, yeah, it's not. Yeah, open meeting.
Okay, there's no new business, especially we always have that on there, I guess it just accidentally got lost off.
You wanna talk with me after this and just say anything I can take care of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, it's, it's something that we'll probably have to have a special meeting for, because it's
Okay.
Time is important on the issue.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
Visibly and Adam actually are single, okay, all right, so do we have, um, a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Todd to adjourn, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Chad, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Haggard?
It's the same, it's on here.
Okay.
What are we doing?
Returning. Okay.
Yes, in that case.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries, we may adjourn at three o'clock six.